The meeting is called to order. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 24th, the BCC meeting in the South Annex. All but one commissioner will be here today. Commissioner Anderson is not going to join us today. So I will be filling in his chair. Jason Cook, would you please come up and lead us in the invocation?
Let us pray. Lord Jesus, we thank you for your mercy today. Thank you for your goodness and your kindness towards us. Thank you for protecting us and keeping us and leading and guiding us. We ask you today to touch every heart and mind in this place that you would let every decision be the outcome of your perfect will. And I pray for those that are going to be in the path of this storm, that you would protect them and keep them and allow everybody to get out of this safe and that you would just have your way today and that your perfect will be accomplished. I ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. I'm looking to see if we have any elected officials in the audience, and I see that we have a commissioner-elect, Mr. Dan Currie. Can you hear me now? Okay. I was just welcoming Commissioner-elect Dan Currie. I don't believe there are any other elected officials in the audience. Okay. Do we have any additions or deletions, Mr. Sunday?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have one addition. That's a request to appoint Ashley Kramer to fill the vacancy on DRB for a design professional seat for the remainder of the term, which is September 24th through January 31st of next year. I have a couple of requested changes. I would like to request to bring them, item number 34. Request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign a resolution of appreciation for the Walton County Fair 100th Year to the front of the agenda. And number 16 is a planning item that is a fee resolution for short-term rentals. I would like to move that from the consent agenda to the regular agenda for your consideration.
And item 31, Madam Chair, is DRMP continuing contract based on a call late yesterday afternoon between DRMP, Mr. Sunday, their counsel, including their corporate president. We have some information that we'd like to share with each of the commissioners. We anticipate that we might be bringing a resolution back on the next agenda. So I believe we'll be imprudent to take that up at this time to our current dispute with them. So we'd ask for that to be deleted.
Thank you. So move.
Well, you can't.
I can't do that.
As the chairman, you can't make the motion as the chairman.
I can't make the motion.
But I can. Motion to approve the consent or the agenda with the deletions and additions. 34, I requested it be come to the front.
Yeah, he aren't. That was a move.
35.
He's removed.
Oh, yes. The deletion request is item number 35, under Commissioner Johns' discussion on outcome proactive versus reactive code.
Will you amend your motion?
I will amend my motion.
I'll amend second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, commissioners. I would like to take just a moment to say that one of our former employees, she was actually an assistant of mine at administration a few years ago, and before that, she worked for me at the jail, and before that, she worked at the clerk's office. Unfortunately, she passed away not before last. Her name was Marty Bishop. So I would just ask that everybody keep her family in your thoughts and prayers.
Very sorry to hear that.
Also, before we jump into public comments, I'd like to ask Mr. Goldberg to come up and give us a brief update on the storm.
What's the hurricane gonna do?
Who has a coin to toss? Good afternoon, Jeff Goldberg for the record. So, we've been monitoring this for a while. It was upgraded to a tropical storm at the 10:00 AM Central Advisory. Commissioners, you all have an email in your inbox with some updates. So basically, it is southwest of Cozumel. Maximum sustained winds are 45 miles an hour. They're looking at development to a category-three storm. It is moving very fast at about 23 miles an hour. Okay, so it's slowed down. It will be moving in about 21, 23 miles an hour as it gets into the Gulf, which is going to cause some catastrophic surge for the Big Bend area. So the area that was affected by Adalia, the area that was affected by Hurricane Debbie, they're going to get hammered again. So we've been talking to our counterparts over there about what they're doing. So those folks are all in our prayers right now. But as far as we're concerned, we're going to start seeing some effects of the outer bands Thursday morning. That's kind of what the timing looks like, according to the National Weather Service. So we're looking at some potential sustained low-end tropical storm-force winds, not throughout the entire county right now, but through part of the county. So based on that, and speaking with Superintendent Hughes and giving him all of the information on the storm, they've made a decision, and they've put it out already on Facebook and on their website, that they're going to close schools on Thursday because they're concerned about the buses and the high-profile vehicles and the winds. As far as we're concerned, we're looking at some of those winds, we're looking at some rain, four to six inches, pockets of 10 inches. What we did is we did go ahead, because there is a moderate risk of flooding, at 1:00 with Public Works, we opened up sandbag locations, one at the Blue Mountain Pit and one right behind the Freeport Commons. So folks are able to go there and fill sandbags and take them at home. So we're putting that stuff out through social media, as well as instructions on how to properly use a sandbag, because that's some of the issues that we've been running into. So our impacts are going to be relatively minimal. We don't expect a whole lot. We're not in any watches or warnings with the exception of a flood watch. Speaking with National Weather Service, they don't necessarily expect us to go into a tropical storm watch or warning unless there's a change in the track, but they're pretty confident on what the track looks like at this point. We're not opening the EOC, we're not staffing the EOC, but we are doing coordination calls and we are working with our partners. Just in case some reason happens and it does do a shift, we'll be ready to respond to that. So we're doing some proactive planning, but we're not moving resources or doing any of that. Doing our conference calls with National Hurricanes Center, National Weather Service, the state EOC, and that's pretty much it at this point.
Well, that's good news.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Goldberg, do we have any plans to send any crews to Taylor or Dixie?
Not until the threat passes, and that's something Mr. Sunday and I will have a discussion on. I did speak with some of the directors there, as well as the director in Swanee County, asking for some advice and guidance from us, and we're just kind of keeping an eye on what's going there. But we want to make sure that we're good here before we send any resources at the discretion of the county administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. You had another item you wanted to bring up, Mr. Sunday?
Yes, Madam Chair, before we move on into public comments, I do have a request from Commissioner Anderson, who could not be here. He has asked that the board consider continuing item number 24, since this is an item that he sponsored. That would be the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay. How does the board feel?
I think, I've got two questions that probably need to be answered before we continue that, probably to give some time, maybe to find some answers to these questions before we do bring it back up. So, you know, if we could at least bring it.
Is that a motion?
Well, I don't know if we need a motion. Like I said, there's a couple of questions. I'm trying to figure out, I hate for this to come back and then we have the questions and then have to push it.
Do you want to ask the questions now? Is that what you're saying?
Well, if that would be appropriate.
Does anyone oppose that?
Usually, that's not an issue for me whatsoever. But with this, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and, at this point in time, address the consent agenda and move that issue to the start of the regular agenda after the fair, Mr. Sunday? And that way, we can take it up that way. If we're going to be getting into the agenda item, we either need to move it or not. So let's do it that way, and then we can determine if we need to continue it at that time or not.
Okay, well, we.
Y'all want to do the fair now?
That's what I said, do the fair and the consent agenda, whatever order you see, and then take that up at that time.
We've got public comments.
On the consent agenda, or if they're not going to be here, so.
Public comment and then the consent. If y'all want to take the item up as a question, the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay. Let's go to public comment on the consent agenda.
Is there anyone in the public that is not going to be here on an item that might come before, that's going, that's on the agenda, that would like to speak now? Yes.
They can't hear you.
Jason, can you turn up? It's about as high as it gets, and this is our new system, too. Okay, well, we'll try to get better. Hi. Go ahead. Please tell us your name.
My name is Lisa Sorrels, S-O-R-R-E-L-L-S. I'm from Dufuniac Springs. I'm probably not going to be here to address Mr. Gladwell's number 32. So I wanted to address it now because this meeting is not conducive to a parent who has to pick up kids from school, so I pulled mine out, any special needs, and won't sit through the whole thing. What I'd like to address is that whether one agrees or disagrees with proposed amendment four to the Florida Constitution, it's an official action, the official action to oppose it by Walton County Commission is presumptive. And for any commissioner who votes in favor of the action, it's an abuse of your power of our trust. The proposed resolution goes well beyond the official duties of the county commission. And the way this resolution is written, it's not an expression of Walton County's opinion as a whole. It clearly states that it is the expression of one person's opinion, and that person is Commissioner Gladwell. This is a personal matter, even if each member supports opposing amendment four on an individual basis. It is not the purview of Walton County Board of Commissioners to do so in a resolution. It would appear that Commissioner Gladwell doubts the ability of Walton County voters to decide for themselves on how we will vote on important matters unrelated to the work of the county government, and any commissioner who votes in favor of this resolution will be implying the same. The Board of County Commissioners' focus is on Walton County issues, that they have a direct interest in, and their job is to create a county for our people, not to tell them how to vote. If Commissioner Gladwell wanted to educate our voters, the resolution would simply have said Walton County encourages voters to study this and all other ballot initiatives carefully, without taking a position for or against it. Education was never the point of this resolution, nor was all the complaining about amendments for vagueness, deceptiveness, or broadness. These were the arguments that Moody presented to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court decided exactly the opposite of what Commissioner Gladwell contends, that it met all the requirements sufficiently clear that any voter could understand it. Clearly, the Supreme Court has more confidence in our intelligence to vote. Some clear and obvious points of the resolution are to put Walton County on the record opposing amendment four and dissuade voters against it, which go against the oath taken by all of the commissioners. I ask that Walton County Board of Commission do not allow this proposed resolution to move forward and that the focus remain on the work of the county government. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else care to speak that's not going to be here? Okay. Okay. Then we will move along to the fair. I think that Commissioner Gladwell, since you're on the board for the fair, I'd like you to read this resolution, if you would, please. Okay. I need a motion.
To approve the consent.
Consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Oh, on the consent agenda? Do you have a question?
Thank you. Barbara Morano. There are two items on the agenda item. One is item eight, which is the code of conduct for all volunteer boards. I want to thank Commissioner Johns for bringing this to the attention of the board at the time, because at September 14th, 2021, all volunteer boards had a code of conduct, which was not true. So, let's look at item, let's look at the code of conduct. And quite frankly, if the Chair of the ZBA did not take an ad in the Dufuniac Herald against the sitting commissioner, calling her a liberal and going against her judgment, I don't think I would be standing here or we would have this code of conduct. Let's look at item number three. Council members shall not take any action that would undermine the actions of their respected board or committee, or the actions of the Walton County Board of County Commissioners. My question, Madam Chair, for our attorney, is if this was in place, would Joe Johnson have been dismissed?
Can you answer that, Mr. Atkinson?
Well, this code of conduct doesn't provide for automatic dismissal. It's up to the board to choose who they dismiss from their boards. That's up to you to do, in terms of how the board's going to choose to interpret it. I imagine the five members of the Board of County Commissioners will make that decision on a case-by-case basis. The point of this code of conduct is not to create an automatic set of sanctions. It's to have a uniform set of code of conduct for all of your boards.
So will you be, so the Coastal Dune Lake Advisory had a code of conduct on 2021. Is that no longer in effect? Are they undercover with this?
They'll be covered by both. Nothing stops the individual boards from adopting more strict policies, they just may not adopt less strict policies. But this is the uniform code of conduct. The point of uniform is to allow the board to establish the high-level governance it wishes to have over its advisory boards.
I'd like to read, "Noncompliance with any of the above provisions shall constitute grounds for removal from the respective board or committee upon majority vote of the Board of County Commissioners." So thank you, Mr. Atkinson, that's correct. It would be the Board of County Commissioners to dismiss. So that was my, I want to make sure, because sometimes when we have these codes, there's a lot of wiggle room.
Right.
And, you know, what I think happened should have been grounds for dismissal. The next item I'd like to look at is item 21, and this is extremely important. This is a directive to look at the Chat Holly area for stormwater and for an event center.
That's all right.
I'd like to bring the attention of the board, because many of the board members were not on the commission when this was decided. Tourist TDT money was used to purchase this property, which means that there will be a tourist component. Since 2021, there has not been a public workshop for any of the people in Chat Holly area. And what you're looking at, if you look at your 21 item, you see a huge event center with, it looks like approximately 1,000 cars. I really want us to look at this, and I'm not saying stop the engineering company in the agenda item, but I wanted you to be aware that the public has not any input on this, and Chat Holly is still a two-lane highway. I do have a member of the audience who lives in Chat Holly, and I'd like her to come up. But I also want to share with you, Jay Tusa had a plan for this event center. I had the opportunity to talk to Jennifer Steele about two years ago, and I looked at that plan. So I'm hoping Brian Kellenberger and the Tourism Department, who are going to handle this project, look at that plan that Jay Tusa had, because there were offices there for the Cultural Arts Alliance. Now, that is extremely important.
I'm going to ask Brian if he would come up, please, and give us an update and let us know if there's been any public meetings or anything along those lines on this particular property. Thank you, Barbara.
Good afternoon, Brian Kellenberger, Gitter Beach Operations. Appreciate Ms. Morano's input and questions on this, and we're doing exactly what she's asking us to do. So the first phase of this was the stormwater venue, or stormwater, regional stormwater facility design that Public Works has been handling. Part of that was a master planning of the venue, and that's all that's on that piece of paper that she has that's also included as part of this submittal. Our next phase is conceptual design of the building, the performing arts building, the ancillary space, concession space, bathrooms, parking, other spaces to be used for other types of events at this venue. And so in order to have public workshops, we have to put together conceptual design in, in order to have something to start with. So our intent is to get the conceptual design started on the actual performing arts venue and all that other space I talked about, and then have public workshops to receive public input on how we would like to proceed. I've actually added another component to this pricing effort that is programming. So programming will give us the knowledge of what does it take to run a facility that we're planning. I think it's a very important component that we understand, you know, it's easy to build something, but when you're building something of this type and of this magnitude, you really need to know what does it take to annually run a venue of this type. I'm in constant contact with Jennifer Steele on the, with the Cultural Arts Alliance, because I realize they're probably going to be our biggest partner in this, in this project and program. And so the pricing effort before you today, or the request for you today, is to approve the cost proposal for conceptual design of the performing arts venue, programming of that venue, and it gives us a very good stepping off point if the county commission decides not to move forward, if they need to scale down or want to scale up.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. I appreciate that update.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm glad to see that we are moving forward with that. And I was under the impression that you, the conceptual plan would come first, and then you have the input, so you've got something to work with. So that's good.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. And there is a conceptual plan already by Jay Tusa, and that's what I mentioned, is the cultural arts would be having an office there. But let me take that one step further. The cultural arts now rents part of that property for a dollar a year. If the Cultural Arts Alliance moves into this event center, which I think would be perfect, that piece of property could have a standalone senior community center. So I just wanted to add that.
I did bring that up at the last meeting. There is a place, and we will discuss that.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
For the record, Alan Osborne, I'll talk on both the same things that Barbara did. This code of conduct for these boards, you know, you can write it all you want, but I just found out recently that the Ethics Commission's not even going to investigate some of the things that y'all think they are. So maybe just not the code of conduct that we have a problem with, because the state's not going to regulate that. They're not going to do anything. They're only going to investigate financial things, so you can call any race you want, any names you want. There's not enough specific stuff in that. So what you're going to have to decide is, how do you enforce what you want to be the standard? And how do you know when somebody's conflicted or their conduct has affected the decision-making of this board? And instead of all these phony baloney boards we've had over the years, that haven't really done anything? I think y'all, what we need in this county, it might save us a lot of money in lawsuits, is that we have a citizen review board for conflicts and codes of conduct slash ethics violation, and that board, as a board, comes to you and says, we believe this person in this particular matter, no matter what the state said, should not act on the board, or may have acted improperly, or has caused an issue that should be headed before. But, you know, we don't have an inspector general, there's no random thing. So if you want to create something, find the most ethical people that you can, who make no money from the county, who you think can form a board and have people apply for it. And I don't mean a bunch of engineers and developers review if an engineer and developer has a conflict. I don't pass a smell test, okay? That's not what I mean. I mean real people that ask real questions about whether you have a conflict, because your biggest problem in this county, why you fight over 12 grand in the budget, is the legal matrix that you spend millions on. And if you could do anything to save the citizens' money from being involved in unethical stuff, you'd be way ahead in being your projects. I'll go on to the second part, because I've only got a minute left. You should drive down Chat Holly, and once you do, you should be frightened. I lived here during Aaron and Opal, and let me tell you, 90% of the places I see down Chat Holly that used to be flooded trailers that were jacked up during the old days are now filled properties with, some of them, 100 units where five trailers won't sit damn near. And I'm going to tell you, when this rain comes, because I was thinking about watching that track and how Opal shifted on us, now, we failed. If you don't realize it, and you can't admit it as commissioners, we failed at our public because the last rain event we had was about four inches, and down here, we ought to have about 6.7 before it starts running in the streaks in the bay. That's what the numbers are. Okay? So after that, it all runs in the bay, there's nothing y'all can do about it or us, that's up to God. But up to that point, you've got a problem looming down Chat Holly, and before you do that engineering plan of the capability, you might want to discuss what water standard should we adopt? Because as he said, this project's huge. We know your little half-inch standard will fail the first time God breaks a sweat, okay? It doesn't work down here. A half-inch does not work. So you might, if you want to have success and not have a future problem, acknowledge the failures of the drainage system down there and set what you think is an achievable standard for this huge piece of property, and I think it will take you a long way.
Thank you very much. I agree with you completely, Alan, that we do need, we do have a lot of stormwater problems, and that was very evident at this last rainfall we had, and we do need to move forward on fixing that. I agree with you. Okay. Is there anyone else that had anything they wanted to speak about from the consent item? Okay, with none? Did you want to move forward with the next item?
Please.
We've got a motion and a second? You have, you've made the motion?
On the consent.
And who made the second? You made the second? Commissioner Merkelmark? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. So.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is citizen request, number 23. That's Walter Bowers. Fair. How long is, how long is your presentation, Walter?
Five minutes tops.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
It'd probably be a lot quicker than that. Walter Bowers, B-A-W-E-R-S. I know everybody's kind of busy. Walter Bowers, B-A-R-N-D, I know everybody's kind of busy today with everything we've got going on. I'm here to present the 2024, the 2023-2024 Walton County Port of War Service Commissioners' Report. This is an annual report that we are tasked to present to the county to show y'all what's going on in the county, how things have been going on with our operations, any significant increases or decreases, and give the Commissioners an opportunity to ask anything they like of my agency, in regards to the operations in Walton County. To sum it all up, it's a three, it's a three-tier report. It has the fire control report, which indicates our rainfall and our fire occurrences and our causes of wildfires throughout the county, our steps for mitigation on areas to help to prevent wildfires, any equipment that we've received. We have received some new tractors, and we have received some new tractors this fiscal year to supplement some of our older equipment. The leased equipment we have with the county with the local VFDs and the other cooperator agencies in Walton County, along with the county operating plan that we have common core, I mean, common core communications with everyone. And then the management report that our forester compiles of the forest health for Walton County. Pretty much everything in Walton County when it comes to the forest management. We've not got any significant diseases or any type of pest outbreaks. So things are doing well. We have a healthy standard timber and healthy standard woods in Walton County. Last year's fire occurrences, I would consider kind of the lower end of normal. We had a normal fire season, but we're on the lower end of it. Not a whole lot to report, other than things are going well in Walton County.
That's good news. That's wonderful.
If anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to entertain them.
Anyone on the board have any questions? No? Mr. Osborne, would you like to ask him a question? Are you up for that?
It's pretty simple, because it's been on social media. Does the Forestry Service have any idea how many people, illegal immigrants, are living in the woods down there? There's pictures of them online. And what are we going to do about it? Is that what we're going to do, is let all these illegal immigrants? Because I see them in the woods in there. And I know it's not their fault, so what are we going to do to help them guys keep their forest to forest and not a home for illegal immigrants? That's what we need to do.
Thank you. I wasn't even aware of that. Were you aware of that?
We do have an issue from time to time with homeless camps. Honestly, not really dealt with a lot of, the law enforcement over the state property down here is handled through the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission. They have the statutory authority over that. If we encounter a homeless camp, or we encounter, encounter a situation like that, we typically deal, get that information to them. They come out with us, and we deal with it. Sometimes they deal with it on their own. Typically, a lot of the situations where we have homeless people on the state forest are actually people that are displaced, that are, I'm not going to say we don't have some undocumented people on our state forest from time to time, but we have, in my tenure, I haven't seen in this area anything more than we normally see with homeless camps. But now, FWC may be dealing with more of that than what I'm aware of. Their record system is different ours, so they're dealing with that in a situational, they're dealing with that in an uptick. They would have information on that.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate all that you do.
I appreciate y'all, and have a good day.
Thank you as well.
Thank you. Yes, let's move item number 30, up to number 34, Request to Approve and Authorize the Chairman to Sign a Resolution of Appreciation for the 100th Walton County Fair.
Yes, I'd like to read it first. The proposed resolution would be, whereas Walton County Fair will celebrate 100 years of serving Walton County as a place for family and friends to meet each other yearly and enjoy catching up, and whereas Walton County Fair produces a traditional county fair that advances the interest of agriculture, wholesome family values, community development, and provides quality entertainment, and whereas the Walton County Fair strives to explore all avenues in which the fairgrounds can serve education and entertainment needs of our community, and whereas the Walton County Fair in Walton County, Florida, has sought to achieve successful results from our community in a cooperative spirit with all the cities, government agencies, businesses, and organizations, and whereas the Walton County Fair has been a strong partner with businesses and organizations and endeavors and promote and develop our local business community, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Walton County, Florida, that the week of October 14th through the 19th, 2024, be designated as Walton County Fair Week. And we would, I'd make a motion that we authorize the chair to sign that motion, or that resolution.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this? This is the 100th anniversary of this fair, right?
This is the 100th anniversary.
Anyone on the board like to speak? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
We do have a couple of board members from the county fair here, and would like to get a picture.
Okay.
Yeah, with the board.
You want to come on up? Come on up.
Oh.
Congratulations. Thank you very, very much.
We have said everybody received their invitations, and if you don't mind, we'll have some written touches on, and we would like to have all y'all there. If you don't mind, we'll have our speech, a little...
And now I think we're moving back to you, Mr. Sunday, correct?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is Request to Approve and Authorize the Chairman to Sign Amendment Number Three to the Contract for Purchase for the Boys and Girls Club. And as I said, this was a request originated with Commissioner Anderson, and in his absence, he's requested a continuance.
And, Mr. McCormick, do you...
I would have no problem with continuance, but I do have a couple of questions. I feel like we might want to bring it up now, so we can have an answer when it comes time to make the final decision on this.
I'm fine with that. How does the board feel?
Do you want to ask, you want to ask them in public, or do you want to ask them of staff at your convenience? I don't care either way, is what I mean.
Commissioner Drake, are you okay with that?
I think it's always appropriate to be able to ask questions when we convene like this, because we can't talk in, between the two meetings, the two weeks that we, we have scheduled meetings, oftentimes we have questions that come up. I mean, I'm just a proponent of being able to ask questions.
Okay, I agree.
Why don't, why don't we do, do this? Well, I'll make a motion that we continue the issue till October the 8th, but pending questions from the board.
We have a motion to continue it to October 8th. Do we have a second? Okay, without a second. I think we go ahead and ask, let you ask the questions, Commissioner McCormick.
I mean, you've got to have a motion to ask questions, to talk.
Until we get to the agenda.
Well, this is a...
We're on.
We're on the agenda.
Do you want to have a, do you want to make a motion, a second, in, in order to be able to speak about it?
I'd like to make a motion just to open up the topic for discussion only.
I'll second that.
Okay, so you want to remove your first, you want to remove your first motion? Okay. Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for you to be able to go ahead and discuss it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead.
All right, for discussion. One area of concern for me is this inspection on this building. Unless, unless there's an updated report from the inspector, I mean, this is where I'm getting this information from. It doesn't look like we got a complete inspection on the roof. Probably about half the roof was not inspected, the metal roof over the gym. So I think that's something that probably needs to be done, you know, in due diligence as far as inspection. That's the only, only problem I saw in the inspection was half the roof system didn't get inspected. And if you look at category 4.1 on the limitations, he states in his own writing that it was not inspected for reasons, he couldn't get to it or something like that. But, you know, I don't want to see us get into a situation we got in with another building we bought, so at least using some due diligence and doing the best we can on these inspections, which brings this up, is I...
Why wasn't the gym roof inspected? If you don't mind me asking.
I can read his reasons.
The inspection report itself reflects an inspection of the TPO roof, the membrane roof, which was about 18,000 square feet of the 29,000 square feet facility. The metal roof part of it, I'm not sure why they did not take that into account. I know our, our facility's staff has been on top of the structure, and that's what we're looking for right now, is those folks.
There was some lumber on top somewhere.
The, the reason given for it not being inspected, and this is coming from the inspector herself, his own report, is to access the roof, the inspector would need to carry another ladder up the metal access ladder to the first-story flat roof. Storage from a church group using the building limited access to the ladder, and there was no way to carry a ladder up to the second ladder due to the storage. This prevented inspection of the metal roof section, which is a pretty good chunk of square foot on, of roof.
Chris, is Chris out there?
And my only concern is, is, is we probably need that inspected, just for due diligence.
Okay. Chris, have you or your staff been on top of this facility?
Yes, sir. Chris Edwards, Walton County, City Mayor. We actually crawled up there and then did a visual inspection ourselves. It's a standing seam roof, no screws penetrates, except for the special joints. I mean, it's, it's a good-looking roof. The metal part is.
How much of it is metal? How, how much of that?
It's just the top section over the gym.
Just the section over the gym?
Yes, ma'am.
So were you able to check the rest of the roof?
Right, ma'am.
Were you able to check the rest of the roof?
While we was up there, we did a walkthrough, and, and that report, it does report that it, there's some bad spots in it, and there is some soft spots on that south side. The report is correct. It is kind of soft in certain areas.
There, did you see the lumber on top of the, on the roof?
I'll be honest with you, I did not see the lumber.
Okay.
There was, I didn't see a pile of lumber. I really didn't, I didn't catch that.
Okay. It just states that in the report, that there was lumber?
I saw that, but I, yeah, I mean, there was all kind, I mean, it wasn't a big bunch of lumber if it was. I mean, I walked by it, I reckon. I was looking for the roof. And there were some patches on the sidewalls. Like I said, the report does a good job on that part, and like I said, he didn't have a ladder, so we crawled up there ourselves and looked at it, and the tin looked, it's in good shape.
Okay. Well, that, that eases some of my concerns, because when he did his deferred cost of how long the roof was going to be, he put a, a five-year lifespan left on that roof. But I was wondering how you come up with that if you didn't inspect the whole roof system? So, you know, what is the lifespan? You know? Not knowing that y'all did an inspection, so my apologies for, for the questions, wish somebody had documented that, could would have said something. Now, the second problem I've got to inspection, and this may be, this may be how all inspections go, I don't know, but it came to my attention that the inspector, this Chris Barnard, we did a research on, I did a research on his license, and he's only licensed for home inspections. Is there a difference between commercial inspections and home inspections? Well, if so, I'm just going off, he's, he identifies himself, and he puts his license number, which is H-I-4-6-0-0. When you research that, that HI is for home inspection. So is there a difference? I know they're advertising as far as commercial building, commercial building inspectors, but according to the inspector's license number, he's only certified to do home inspections. So I'm just, don't know if there's a difference between commercial and home, is my question.
It's interesting, because his email is floridacommercialbuildinginspectors.com. So I don't know the answer to that. Do you?
We can ask him for a certification specifically for commercial.
There is a difference between a home and a, and a commercial.
Well...
Now, what's he qualified for? That, that we'll have to run down.
Yeah, well, just based off his, what he put in the report, again, he identified himself as Inspector Chris B-A-R-N-A-R-D, license number H-I-4-6-0-0. I went to S-Biz and did a, I mean, a DBPR, and that comes back a valid license to him, but it's for home inspection, not commercial. And that's what triggered me, since this is a commercial building, is there a difference in the way you inspect the buildings? And that's my only...
We can get the answer to that.
And I, the reason I wanted to bring that up now was so we can get these answers. So when we come back to the table, we'll have it, and we don't have to prolong another meeting.
I'm glad you brought it up. It's a very, very interesting point, but yes, we are going to check into that.
And with that, I will make the motion now to continue this project to the next board meeting.
Is that the 8th of October?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to continue this. Any discussion? Anyone in the audience, audience like to speak to this? Just, we're just talking about moving it to the next meeting. Mr. Osborne?
You noticed this meeting, and everybody came, and I feel like you're only doing it because Tony didn't show up. And, you know, and it's just wrong. This issue needs to be decided. The rest of the issues need to be talked about. I know this motion is just to move it, but y'all need to make a decision on what we're doing here, and you need to really think about the history of our pattern of buying things that were a pig and a poke, is what we call it, is hillbilly. You know? It's not what you thought it was. The Mojo Building, not what you thought it was. It's not what we think it is, is ridiculous, okay? It's over and over and over. We changed the use of the Foreman property, and then, so we could pay more for it. Then we sold off our own property into Funiac for about 25% of the appraised value, and then we, these people came, and I was in this room when this thing got approved, and the variances and everything else that made that club happen and gave it the worth were sold to us right out here, and I don't think any of y'all were up there. I didn't think Clay was here then. Melissa's probably the only person that was here for those meetings, but we got told that all those exceptions and stuff were for the benefit of this community. And once again, somebody that wants to benefit for this community, wants to make a profit off of us and sell us some slant that we just got to have for almost $10 million, what other kind of fools fall for that bait and switch? They said it was a nonprofit, we're using it as a nonprofit, and we gave them all the variances and everything else, and all the help with it, and it ought to stay that. You got told not to borrow all this money, and I'm sorry that we're suffering. The seniors, the seniors could get a senior center built right over there on the Foreman property, and you ought to stop all these lawsuits and build a madam center with that money that we shouldn't be spending on that unethical treatment I talked about before. But don't buy a pig and a poke, please don't. That's a lot of money. Thank you. And you ought to hear it today while all these people are here to talk about it.
Thank you. If you were here to talk about the Boys and Girls Club purchase today, would you please raise your hand? Thank you. Thank you. Well, we have a motion and a second to postpone it. Ms. Morano?
Barbara Morano, I'm just wondering what location on October eighth?
That's north end of Dufuniac.
That would be Dufuniac.
North end of Dufuniac.
See, north end of the Dufuniac, so all these people here will have to travel up. I just want to make, tell the audience that they can come up during public comment at the very end of this meeting, if they're willing to stay, to say what they have to say. But to have this go up to Dufuniac right now, I, I, I don't know what else to say. I think that's extremely disappointing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Harris?
At the very least, you can postpone it to the South Annex, there's nothing wrong with that. I was here when the Mojo Building was bombed, I was here when the Boys and Girls Club was done. The Mojo Building, I did a complete request on every item in the file on the Mojo Building. Y'all should be ashamed, but y'all weren't the ones that voted on it. But the ones that did should be totally embarrassed. We spent money, we had our own county people, our own county engineers and everybody. Look at the Mojo Building, nothing wrong with it, great. We had to buy it quick, we had to buy it for more than it was really worth because somebody else might buy it out from under us. And it was a great location, we could do, we could move right in. Five years later, we hadn't moved in. What did we find? Any idiot like me could notice that you couldn't use the offices because they were covered in mold. So our county missed it, the inspector missed it, everybody missed it. We are paying, how much interest, Melissa, a year on that Mojo Building?
None on the Mojo Building, it was, um, it came out of reserves.
Okay, but still, we have a building that we sent money on that we can't use five years later. Now, this, this is, this is not the way you operate. The Boys and Girls Club just got money from the Wine Festival that was donated to them. They get all kinds of donations. I have no idea why we want to buy a building. I would love to sell you my condo at Edgewater for more than it's worth, and I'll lease it back from you for a dollar a year. That doesn't make any financial sense. People sitting up here have to have some financial responsibility. And this is not good financial responsibility. But I have a question for Clay. Clay? Look up. If this Boys and Girls building, if this Boys and Girls building is built, and there is a, any kind of investigation, whether it's a grand jury investigation or what, what would you say the chances are this will be tied up for a year, maybe even more? Because there will be somebody hiring an attorney on this that's got plenty of money and doesn't mind suing. And what do you think will happen? Do you think we're in good shape, spending the county's money to buy this Boys and Girls Club, and it will just be an okay deal and it will float right down the river?
Madam Chair, you want me to address that?
If you choose.
So I'll say this, Ms. Harris, you're stepping on my toe, a little bit of what I have to talk to this board about when we get to bond issuance and discussion. My opinion, county buys property, you have to have a public purpose to buy a property, you have to identify that. You've got more latitude when you're using money that you already have. You have less latitude when you're using specific allocated funds like the TDC. Ms. Harris has asked me this question about TDC purchases once before. And I'm going to give a similar answer to what I did then. It is imperative that the board's findings, when it chooses to use specified funds, and in this case it will be a debt issuance and a bond, that if you do not have a legitimate bona fide public purpose to support the issuance of those bonds, we will face heightened scrutiny, great deal of scrutiny, over how we chose to spend that money. And so what I would say is that because there is a debt issuance here, it's not simply the purchase of the property, Ms. Harris. It is the actual function of borrowing the money that we will have to go through specific findings. And listen, I've talked about this, I've talked to bond counsel about this. Because you're pledging a revenue stream and you're doing public finance, whether it's private market or public market, there are going to be covenants attached to that. I take that seriously because I have to issue a legal opinion letter saying it's valid. But that is of greater exposure than when you simply just choose to buy this and you have the money sitting in reserves or so, or out of general revenues. Because that public purpose will be the subject of question. Certainly the lender's going to want to know about it, and if somebody challenges us, I guess it depends on when they challenge us, whether or not we find ourselves subject to investigation, legal proceeding or otherwise, whether that's before or after the bond issuance. But this board, when you make this decision, it's going to be beyond purchasing this property. I want the board to understand that, you're borrowing money to do this. And it will require very detailed findings of this board to sustain that and to sustain any questions or challenges. So as always, lawsuits take a long time. So I would say if it is sued, we are going to be stuck in a lawsuit for a while because they all do.
Thank you.
I am a hundred percent for the seniors having a place. I think they need their own place. I'm not sure that they understand they're going to get to use the kitchen there only when the Boys and Girls Club says they can. They're not going to get the facilities they think they're going to get. I think it's owed to them to be explained to them what little space they're going to have and that the Boys and Girls Club will still control what they do and when they can use it. I think they need to understand that. But I think all y'all need to understand, you've got a hurricane out there that could turn this way at any time. You just had a rainstorm not long ago. We had eleven cars flooded in our garage in a rainstorm, just a rainstorm. We had a four thousand dollar a day pump, pumping water out of that because we have a permit to pump directly into the Gulf. You have flooded all over down here, just with a minor rainstorm. But we don't have nine point five million dollars to fix the issues we've got. But you've got nine point five million dollars to buy a building and lease it back for three thousand a month? This is a joke.
Thank you, I don't disagree with you. We do have a lot of stormwater issues down on the South End, especially, I'm sure they're throughout the county. But I've seen things that I've never seen, never seen before on the South End, ever. Infrastructure. Mr. Curry?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Just a reminder that the motion is to continue.
This is about, about continuing this topic to the next meeting?
So I can't piggyback what Ms. Harris was talking about, with finances?
No. Dan, go ahead, go ahead, uh, go ahead, take a couple of minutes and just say what you want to say.
Well, I just, um, actually, it's, I guess it's more for Melissa if she wouldn't mind answering some of this. I know we already have two outstanding loans, and I think where are we at? Almost a half million dollars a year paying those. One was for the internet for two point six million, and another one was a thirty million dollar line of credit. That right now, between the both, we owe about fourteen?
Yes, sir, roughly between both of them, we owe closer to thirteen at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, so we, it was the quickest meeting I've ever been to in my life in Walton County yesterday, the budget meeting.
Typically, that's the way they are, the last one, because there's several meetings that lead up to that, where there's a lot of input.
Oh, I'm not, I loved it.
But typically, that's, that's, but I know you were surprised.
Yeah, I was.
But that's typically the way they, they go.
But my question is, with this nine million that we're thinking about borrowing, was that already figured into that budget?
Madam Chairman, point of order, please.
Okay, Mr. Curry, let's just keep it on topic, okay, as far as moving the, the meeting, I'm sorry.
No, Commissioner McCormick has a problem with me being up here, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Howard, or Ms. Vega, whichever one wants to come up first?
Madam Chair, I think it is, respectful to Commissioner McCormick, he, uh, he got us to a point earlier where we could bring up something for discussion. But on this, I feel like we need to respect the desire to, to just vote on the motion to whether or not to continue this or not.
I agree, I agree, thank you. We need to keep it on that.
Right, and I would like to encourage, like Ms. Suzanne said, that the motion be changed to the next South Annex meeting, not the next BCC meeting in Dufuniac.
Thank you. Ms. Howard?
Yes, Tabitha Howard. I also would like it to be here in the South because I have a letter here that says, hey, Ms. Howard, good morning. As we discussed, this agenda item is set, the Sandestine Drain is, is a South End matter. And it's the board's practice to hear matters in their representative area when impractical. So when I wanted something on this, on the agenda that I found extremely important, I was told I couldn't have it on it because I was going to be up in the Dufuniac, which that has happened before. And it was said that it needed to be in the South because it is a South issue. And the Boys and Girls Club is a South issue. So, yes, to continue it, but when it's in the South.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Commissioner McCormick, do you have any objections to having it continued to the South Annex?
Good afternoon. My name is Nancy Buffum. I am currently a resident of Santa Rosa Beach, three years new to this area. I'm coming from California, I'm coming from an area where we had wonderful, dynamic senior centers in every city up and down the peninsula. And the way they got there was, first of all, they had to have the money to do it, a tax base.
Ma'am, we're, I'm sorry, but we're talking about whether we're going to exchange the meeting to a different date?
But you've done that a couple of times already, I've been waiting to get here. And I'm here now.
Well, we do have public comments as well at the end of the meeting. You have three minutes, but you have two minutes in...
Real quick, yeah.
Okay.
I attend the South County Walton Seniors Group and find them to be very good about bringing senior references and senior activities into the area. And apparently, they're looking at this Boys and Girls property as the i, currently ideal one. Now, I don't know if you have a backup property or not, but I've seen the engineering and the financing and the park report, and they were very good. So I'm disappointed I don't see my councilman here, my committee member, Tony Anderson. But my message to him is, I really would like to see this because not only is it activities, it's centralized resources for your senior community, whether it's health or safety or whatever. We feel like orphans going from one place to the other. And I'd like to know if he has an action plan and whether or not it could be put on the website so we could see it.
Well, we will have to ask him if he does, and...
No, you, you have to ask him.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, we will have to ask him.
I'd like to know if we could have, you know, the separate parts of things you're working on. I realize they have a history, they're very complicated.
Well, we, we are not, we haven't made a decision on whether or not this is going to be purchased. And that's what we're trying to decide right now, is if we're going to discuss that today or if we're going to discuss that down the road.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm ahead of everybody here, I guess, okay, so. Anyway, I will see you at the next meeting, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If, if it fits the schedules and everything, I would amend my motion for the next meeting in South.
On the South End?
It was not my intention to try to...
Right, right. What is the date of the next meeting on the South End? Does anyone know?
Our next meeting in South is October the twenty-second.
October twenty-second. You, you, would like to amend your motion?
Is that, is that going to fit with, with...
Well, in terms of the closing, the roof places are on closing. I mean, we're just got to have both issues on the same gym. So just make sure we have that and whether or not to continue the closing behind the time. At the same time, we can do if that's the case.
So we have a, are, are you changing your motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll amend to continue this to the next South Walton Board meeting.
I'll amend so.
Okay, so we have an amended motion to move it to the next South Walton meeting on October twenty-second. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Drake, do you have anything you'd like to ask or say before we vote? Okay, anyone else in the audience before we vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so it'll be October twenty-second on, in this room? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Give these folks just a moment to clear the room. Thank you, Madam Chair. The next is an update, a brief update on paid parking. If you recall, a couple of meetings, two or three meetings ago, we discussed this. The board approved for four areas to be applicable to a paid parking initiative, those being the Greaton Beach Parking Lot, which is currently under construction, three ninety-three South Parking Lot Parking Facility, which is also currently under construction, the Driftwood Parking Area, and the Mead, what we refer to as the Mead Five Acre Parking Parcel, both of which will need improvements. And then finally, the Van Ness Butler Parking Lot between, situated between Seaside and Watercolor. We have the RFP finished and ready to go on the street. We have not issued that RFP yet because those four, those first four facilities are not yet ready to be part of this program. The one that is, is Van Ness Butler, and I'll give you a, a quick update on where I'm at on that. I had met with St. Joe about that parking lot, we had discussed several options. I have put a written request into them for some agreement with what would constitute an improvement. I have not received any response from St. Joe yet. But in the, in the, in the same time, I did talk to a parking company who, who, who indicated to me that they could initiate this program at that parking lot with nothing more than a sign that contains a QR code. Even went so far as to say that their signage could replace the signage that currently exists. So the question to St. Joe is, does that constitute an improvement in your mind, which is spelled out in the deed? Once we hear back from St. Joe, we'll bring that back to you or either move that forward with the RFP.
Have we provided them with a, with a date that we expect to have that information by?
We have not.
Can we do that?
Provide, um, St. Joe? St. Joe, I can, I can follow up with a date?
Thank you.
Do you have a date in mind?
I think it's been going on quite lengthy, you know, I mean, it's been going on for quite a while. If we're going to do something, I think we need to go ahead and do it. So I would say within the next two to three weeks.
Correct.
Thank you.
Please, Kevin, Kevin Boyle from Seaside is here, and he would like to speak to this item as well.
For the record, Kevin Boyle, B O Y L E. Good afternoon, I am Kevin Boyle, I'm the General Manager for the Seaside Community Development Corporation. This first part of what I'd like to address is on behalf of S C D, Seaside Community Development Corporation, the Watercolor Community HOA, and the St. Joe Company. We met and had a really great collaborative meeting discussing our vested shared interests in the use of the Van Ness Butler Lot. What we'd like as a group is to just have some pointed input and insight and what exactly the plan and the goal is for the county for this lot. Kind of moving on to a little bit more of the, the Seaside Community Development stance. As we look at the, at the list here, listed in green is Van Ness is listed as a regional beach access. Obviously, that use has changed. It's, it's pretty clear that the use of that lot is more for... It's pretty clear that the use of that lot is more for employees of the Watercolor Community HOA, the St. Joe Company, and of our merchants and our company in Seaside. And so, what we'd like to do is to be able to start to have a conversation, and we've had wonderful discussion with Administrator Sunday. Brian Callenberger has been very open in discussing his plans for county transit. But I think what we really want to try to focus on is the experience that Seaside has had in managed parking. We were, we put our necks out. We've been an innovative thought leader in this. We've worked with Donald Choup, who is the parking guru, and we've had him visit Seaside and analyze what we've done. We'd love to share our data with the county to make sure that what's happening in all the places that you are looking to manage parking is that we can help to show what are the things that you should be focusing on and what are the things that could be potential pitfalls. Specifically with the Van Ness Lot, I think we were talking about county transit. There's a mention of a municipal guest, and I think that's somebody that's visiting the area and then using county transit to travel all along 30A and in South Walton. And I think what we need to do is start talking about the municipal worker and try not to delineate between those two definitions. So, we have folks that are coming to support and staff these businesses that are building our tourism or the backbone of our tourism, specifically in Seaside and elsewhere, and looking for solutions for transit and parking. We're doing everything we can to support our employees, our merchants. We're putting a significant financial investment to do so with our shuttle, with tens of thousands of ridership every, every season. And so, what we'd like to do is be able to open that discussion with the county and also to start having some specific discussions about that use of the Van Ness Lot, which, again, the use there is pretty, pretty obvious to anyone that parks there, and we just want to make sure that, you know, there's a, there's a discussion there before you move to, to just paid parking.
Well, I personally, I feel like it's county-owned property.
Sure.
And, and, you know, we are not in the habit of supplying parking for businesses. That's not what we do.
Right.
And so, you know, we have to come up with something. It's got to be of some benefit to the county, to the citizens that own that property. So, whether we sell it, you know, the whole thing to you all, or whether we have the parking program or whatever option the board, you know, decides. But I think we do need to have that conversation. I don't know how everyone else feels about this, but.
Yes, ma'am. We're not looking for anything to be free. I think what we're looking for is the ability for us to see what is the best discussion and the best return on investment for the county. One of the things that if there is paid parking, there's a better-than-not chance that we'll be paying for that parking, which we are absolutely okay with. We're also in, okay with the purchase of the lot. We've had all those types of discussions, and we're open to any and all of those discussions. We're coming in not only as a community partner, looking at the best mobility for 30A and the transit for, not only for the municipal guest, but like I said, the municipal worker. But we're coming to the table with financial solutions and partnership solutions. And the collaboration that we had with the Watercolor HOA in that meeting and the St. Joe Company just shows that there's a, there's a private interest here that we're, we're willing to have those discussions, but absolutely not any sort of handout or anything like that. This is, and again, the amount that we've invested in managed parking, the return we've seen on that, and the feedback we've gotten, both from outside entities and parking management programs, we're willing to share that with everyone.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the board that has any questions? No?
We don't have a motion on the floor.
No, we don't have a motion, but, well, thank you. I guess that's, we're at a place where we definitely need to have some further conversation about this.
I think what would be appropriate, and obviously, just speaking from my prime stake, when the RFP goes out, when we do, when those things are reviewed, if there's a way for us to be involved with that, we'll, we'll put in a proposal, however it seems necessary for us to involve ourselves in that conversation, but for us to be involved with that discussion would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. We don't have a motion or anything, so you can bring it up at public comments. Pardon?
It's an update, only agenda is an update, not to take action on.
There's no action? I'm sorry, I didn't hear, what?
It's an update from you.
Yes. Well, it's an update from Stan, from Stan Sunday, and he's providing input to it, to give us a little information.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next item is item number 26, and that's a request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the first change order to contract number 24-05 with RBM for the Holiday Shores Phase One Pedestrian and Drainage Improvements Project. That would increase the contract price by $148,320 and the contract time by 120 days. I'm going to ask Mr. Harmon, Jim Harmon, if he's still with us to step up and give you some more details, but I can tell you that primarily this is some improvements that was planned for Phase One B that has now been designed and moved into Phase One A, primarily about 451 feet of pipe, drainage pipe.
This money has shifted a little bit, right? From the one section?
Yeah, off the record, Jim Harmon, Walton County Public Works Engineering, I'm the project manager out there. Yes, we incurred savings out there at the project by redesigning some of the sidewalk on the east end and by redesigning some of the stormwater outfall on Shore Drive to the tune of a little over $140,000. We're using that money plus the 148 that we are requesting to add part of that was going to be part of Phase One B. So, we are, we haven't changed the scope of the project. We haven't added anything to the project. We're just moving part of Phase One B into Phase One A, which will allow us to complete a segment. Right now, we have a box with a hole in it that's covered up by a piece of plywood. Now, we'll be able to connect up the 42-inch pipe to that and complete that, that segment of the work.
I think that's looking great out there, and I know it's a lot of hard work, but it's, it's, it's been a long time-needed sidewalk and, and the stormwater that you're fixing.
They put more concrete in the ground today, so we're moving along on it well.
Fantastic.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any comments from any board member?
We're down.
Okay. Anyone in the audience care to speak to this? Okay, I'll.
Need, I would vote to.
We are waiting.
Wait to Commissioner.
Commissioner Drake, be back.
We have, well.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next item is request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign a resolution recognizing the week of September 21st through the 28th, 2024, as National Estuary Week in Walton County.
Motion to approve.
Do we need to read anything on that? Do we need to read that resolution?
Not unless you want to.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'm going to wait till he comes back since he's so close. Commissioner Drake, we're just voting on signing, the chairman signing the resolution to make September 21st through the 28th the National Estuary Week in Walton County. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item is a request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement with Light Speed Commerce, Inc., for the point-of-sale systems and website for Eagle Springs Golf Course and Recreation Center and Restaurant. Currently, we have two separate point-of-sale systems and four up for the golf, and I forget the one for the restaurant and the, and the bar, but Light Speed will take the place of both of those, can handle both points-of-sale systems, and will come out of savings over about $200 a month.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Yes, Mr. Curry.
Dan Curry, see you are live. Real quick question, I just want to know, will that separate out to where you can see separate P&Ls from the, from the restaurant and bar and the golf course? It's not going to be all in one where we have to cipher through? You can separate the two entities?
Yes. As far as the general ledger goes, we'll still have the same general ledger accounts, but if you're asking if we'll be able to take receipts and separate them out, we should have the functionality to do that.
Yeah, so they could basically have their own separate P&Ls.
It will not change anything in the general ledger. This is simply the point-of-sale system for the credit card.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to the planning and development. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Vega, would you like to speak?
Lisa Vega, I'm just going to make a comment for Dan. So, a POS system, you would need to make sure it's implemented correctly. If it's implemented correctly, then yes, it will pull out each one of those itemized, but it has to be implemented that way. If it's not implemented that way, then no.
Is, the plan is to implement it that way though, isn't it, Melissa?
We would be able to run the, the reports from the receipts and be able to pull those separately as far as what exactly is being sold, but now as far as how it interfaces with Munis, I cannot tell you that. I have not seen any point-of-sale system that interfaces in that detail with Munis, but I can, I can check with MIS and see if that's a possibility.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none.
I think you need to call for a vote.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, the next item is under planning and development, and that will be a presentation from Barge Design Solutions and a request to accept the watershed management plan.
Also, I wanted to amend.
Can you give us your name, please?
I'm sorry. Kevin Canoy with Barge Design Solutions, also a resident of Point Washington Tech Project. We're really excited to work on it. It's, so, so FDM is, has a Bureau of Mitigation. They prioritize flood risk management as an integral part of their mission. The goals of this project are to assist in local communities like Walton County to develop a watershed management plan, and purpose of this is to try to move up in the county rating system. This is a rating system that is monitored by the National Flood Insurance Program and increases resiliency in Florida communities. Why does it matter? Well, the purpose of this, this plan, and if it meets all the criteria and the points, you'll actually get a reduction in your flood insurance premiums, which benefits all Walton County property owners and with their flood insurance. Next slide. Again, my name's, I'm with Barge Design Solutions. We are a multi-blissed firm. We're one of your continuing service consultants. We are working on several projects around the county. We are located in Miramar Beach. We have offices all over southeast in Florida. I'm in, like I said, in Walton County. We have an office in Panama City. I'm the principal in charge for the project. Our project manager, David King, is not here, so I'll be making the presentation. Our technical lead is Florida Atlantic University. They actually have done 35 of these studies across the state, and actually were awarded a grant to actually create a template for this watershed management plan, so we're just following a template. And this was led by Dr. Fred Blatcher, who's also a professional engineer and PhD, and his support staff. We also had a community professional facilitator, Carpenter D. M. Community Solutions, Lynn Cherry, who's, was on the team to help with some public meetings. Next slide. So, what is a watershed master plan, a watershed management plan? Next slide. So, part of the, part of, to meet the criteria, to increase your CRS rating and get those reductions in flood insurance, we had to meet eight criteria. So, some of the criteria, we had to characterize the watershed. We looked at natural areas, wetlands, protected natural resources. The map on the right is basically, we modeled the whole county, including some tributaries outside of Walton County that, actually in Alabama, to make sure we had a comprehensive model. And we looked at policy framework, which are affected by peak flows and volumes. We assessed vulnerable areas like future land use, sea level rise, king tides, 10, 25, 100-year design storms. We looked at runoff duration for five, up to five days events. We looked at green and gray infrastructure, and also we developed an action plan to dedicate, to dedicate funding sources for future improvements and specific mitigation projects prioritization. Next slide. So, this kind of looks like a periodic table in chemistry, but again, we looked at, there's gray and green solutions. Green solution would be sod on your roof or walls, all the way to a gray solution of a levee, seawall construction, tieflex valves. We also looked at, again, prioritizing risk and developing capital improvement and financing plan. Next slide. As part of the plan, we had to have a couple of public meetings. We had a public meeting with the, open to the public and the local mitigation strategy people that represented Paxton, Freeport, Dufuniac, Walton County. Had a great meeting, got a lot of feedback. We want to make sure, initial part of the plan, we were getting proper feedback and it was meeting their, their requirements. And then we had a follow-up second meeting to, a later version of the plan, to show that we did listen to them and put things in the plan, especially what we felt were critical assets, critical property and things like that in the plan. Next slide. So, where we are, like I said, this is an update of the project. We are substantially complete. We have received minor comments from FDM. That will be addressed in the next month. And some next steps, for the grant, we had to officially, the county has officially adopted the, by the Little Mitigation Strategy Group has adopted the plan, and then it should be used to update a risk mitigation strategy during the next LMIS plan update. And that concludes my update. If you have any questions, and also Melinda Gates, work with Melinda Gates and Tris, Tracy Goodheart, they're here as well to answer any questions.
Fantastic. Great information.
A lot of good information.
Anyone have any questions?
Appreciate your efforts.
Thank you very, very much. I do have one question for you.
Yes.
In your, in your studies there, did you find that, that in maybe South Walton, are there more homes that are requiring flood insurance than, say, five years ago?
Well, part of the, part of the grant requirement, you actually had to look at sea level rise. So, we had to look at rain events from a zero-to-five-foot sea level rise. So, when you factor that in, you definitely are going to see properties that are going to be affected, and that's, that's why we call it risk, risk prioritization. And so, we, yes, we definitely saw some of that in our study because you had to look at the sea level rise.
So, on your 10-year, you have 10-year, 25-year, and 100-year?
100-year.
So, the 10-year, what are those usually, what areas are those typically for? Are these for single-family homes, or what kind of storm requirements are typically used for the 10-year? Because it's my understanding that with all the development that we've got going on right now, that we prefer to have stormwater, 100-year stormwater plans. Is that, does that make sense to you?
I don't have that specific information to answer you. It's in the report, but if Melinda or Tracy want to answer that?
Thank you very much, Mr. Boyle, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioner Johns.
Hello.
To answer your question, the watershed master plan is actually looking at design storm criteria. So, when we say 10-year, 25-year, and 100-year, these are simulations under certain conditions, certain around, certain amount of rainfall, certain curvatures, and basically, we're looking at that topography and under those design storms, seeing how the water moves. So, yes, under 100-year, that is a much more, that is a better capture of attenuation of flood than a 25-year. But per this plan, we had to look at the different simulations because what's important as far as this master plan is concerned is looking at critical facilities such as our public infrastructure that we, as the county, must maintain, right? In addition to fire, police stations, our evacuations, where we're going to put our citizens in the, in the event of evacuation. So, we're looking at all these things, making sure that in the event that something happens catastrophic, that these places can still function, and we still can function as a county. So, that's the foundational piece of this watershed master plan, and then, again, this data is best available data. So, we have the best available data that has been modeled for this county, and this information is also going to inform the vulnerability assessment that we're currently undertaking that state mandated. So, just to kind, I know that was probably a little bit more than, than what you asked for, but just to kind of give a better understanding of the 10, 25, and 100, and how that applies to our county.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Anyone?
Tracy Goodheart, Flood Plan Manager, Walton County.
Thank you, Tracy. I know there's not a motion or anything on the floor, and this is an update, but can we allow, it's, can, can I, can you, can you hold off to public comments, Mr. Osborne? Is that all right?
No, it's a leave, I'll walk out.
Oh, do you have questions for them?
Yes, ma'am. I'll be more than happy to say to public comment, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Mr. Carpenter, would you like to address ad number one under planning?
Yes, sir. Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department, C-A-R-P-E-N-T-E-R. Thank you, Commissioners. We have a request to appoint Ashley Kramer to fill the vacancy on the Design Review Board for a Design Professional. for a Design Professional vacancy for the remainder of the current term from today through January 31, 2025. Ms. Kramer is a landscape architect and fills qualifications for that vacant Design Professional seat. We've had a difficult time having a quorum. It requires two Design Professionals to be at the same meeting, to have a minimum number of seats seated for a quorum. We greatly appreciate filling this seat.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Can you tell me how many board members that we are lacking?
We still have a, an open seat for an affected property owner. That would be a property owner with a business or other property located within 400 feet of US 98 or the southern portion of US 331, south of the Chautauqua Bay Bridge.
Are we not taking 30A and Sineka Highway into account yet?
We are not. I expect that we need to have that discussion. We put those rules in place to give the board the opportunity to turn on Design Review Board responsibility for those other corridors at the discretion of the board when you're ready. We may need to add a few members to that, given that would greatly increase their purview
Right.
and their workload.
Right.
And a few more members would certainly help carry that load.
Thank you. So if anybody out there knows anyone that would like to be on the Design Review Board, there is an opening. If you fill the criteria, that'd be great.
We'd greatly appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Okay, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Commissioner Johns. Commissioners, I have before you a request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign a resolution permitting domestic dogs in designated county parks. Specifically, this is limited to Paradise Park. We have run this by the county's insurer and have included the necessary language. So we would request a motion.
Thank you. We need a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That's three to one with Commissioner Gladwell, nay.
We deleted my other items, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing?
Republic hearing.
Commissioner McCormick, did you have anything at all?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gladwell?
Yes, ma'am. My first item is, as you know, the, there's several resolu, or there's several constitutional amendments on the ballot in November. One of them, that we received a request from a fellow county to consider a resolution opposing was Amendment Four. As of right now, there are 13 counties that have passed resolutions of opposition because of the language, particularly where it regards parental consent. And those include Jefferson County Commission, the Sarasota County Commission, the DeSoto County Commission, the Collier, the Lee County Commission, the Collier County Commission, the Bradford County Commission, the Liberty County Commission, the Okaloosa County Commission, the Gilchrist County Commission, and among others, have all passed this resolution opposing this. I believe it's an important step to inform our citizens of our concerns, particularly around parental consent. And I would make a motion that we approve the resolution.
We have a motion to approve the resolution. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Gladwell? Do you want to vote on this today, or do you want to wait for the chair to be president?
I would, I mean, at some point, we need to get it done before November, and we've already put it off twice. I understand your concern and I-
No, that's, I'm leaving that to the prerogative of the board. We can vote today, or we can wait for the chair?
But I would like to see us go ahead and get this out.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Mr. Osborne?
For the record, Alan Osborne, I'm going to tell you, my opinion is you're out of bounds, completely out of bounds. I'll tell you how I'm voting. I don't, I don't support this bill either. But I've given the opportunity as a citizen to go vote for that. I don't support killing children, me personally. I think there's a reason sometimes that people need something, but that's a personal choice, and it's given to the voters. But you, you don't, you don't, you don't adopt things about the Second Amendment, you don't adopt things about immigration, you don't adopt things about a lot of things that are put before constitutional items, and I think it's undue influence. We never, nobody's ever come up here and made a motion that the board please, on behalf of the citizens, go adopt a position on this. Nobody's ever done that, to my knowledge. And like I said, I probably vote like most conservatives in this county. But you shouldn't be doing this. Because you have, you already know that every citizen that's of legal, is legally available to vote, has an opportunity to vote on this. So it's redundant at best. And I, and I say it for the good of order. Because we must, if we're, if we're going to be objective, we must not let our personal feelings override the rights of the Constitution. And once something is sent to the ballot, I wouldn't have asked you to adopt a resolution to support the sales tax once you put it on the ballot, because you were going to get an answer. Mr. Gladwell will receive his answer on whether this county supports that amendment or not from the people where it should come from. And like I said, hell, I'm on Danny's side, probably. And we're going to vote the same way, believe it or not. But he shouldn't, but, but he shouldn't be in here asking you to do this. I just feel like it's way out of bounds. And what you do when you do this, you convince people who are on the other side of it that you don't want to hear everybody's opinion. Even though I believe the majority of the opinion in this county will vote the way Mr. Gladwell wants, I don't believe you should set the stage where people believe that, that the board will override their own personal opinion in an election. And so that's what, I'm going to leave it at that. Freedom is a costly thing. Be careful what you give up.
Thank you. Ms. Harris?
Danny, why didn't you put all the other amendments? Why aren't we making-
Ms. Harris, would you please-
Suzanne Harris, H-A-R-R-I-S.
Thank you.
Why didn't you put all the other amendments on here and tell us how to vote on those? Why'd you just pick this one?
May I answer?
I asked you. I said, Danny.
But I, I can't answer without the chair's permission. So I'm not-
Yes, you may, if you like. If you like.
Well, first, the first reason is that-
You can stop my time while he's talking. Please.
Yeah, I may go a little bit. First of all, this is not telling anybody that we're, or this is not saying that we're going to overturn anything, because we don't have the authority. It's not saying that we are doing anything but giving our personal and our collegial opinion as to what the merits of this is.
Did the public ask for y'all's opinion?
The Collier County Commission asked all the county commissions in the state of Florida to consider this resolution. And I put it on the agenda originally as a consideration to the, to my fellow commissioners in Collier County. I do think it's a reasonable request. We're not the only county that's considered it. It's, like I said, there's 13 others, including our neighbor to the west, Okaloosa. Most of our congressional delegation has come out against this. The governor is strongly against this. The Republican nominee for president is against this, who lives in Florida.
I'm strongly against it, too.
So-
Just for the record. But I just don't think it's the county commissioner that get paid by our tax dollars should be telling people that don't agree with it, which is not me. I know exactly how I'm voting on it. So, but I just think it's not y'all's place to pick this. You may think it is, but I think everybody that's going to vote, vote on the amendment should not have to listen to what the county commissioners tell them how to vote. I think it should be your own choice in your own heart. And I just think it, y'all have stepped over the line on this. I just, that's just my opinion. But if you think it's your job as a county commissioner to tell people how to vote on an amendment on the ballot, then that's up to you. But I think you're going to get a backlash on it.
Well, I certainly respect your opinion. And, but I do consider, I mean, I'm certainly not saying that we're telling anybody how to vote, but we're joining our fellow commissioners in several counties.
But not all counties.
Not all counties.
And not half of the counties. And not most of the counties.
But-
You're going to be in the minority of counties that tell their citizens how to vote.
We're not telling anybody.
Basically, Danny, that's what you're doing.
We're giving education about a serious problem with this amendment. There's two of them that, one is that it would basically destroy the parental consent law that our governor and our legislature passed. And it would, it also does not have definitions that would allow the courts to reasonably interpret this. So I just want to call attention.
It's not about what's in it. Because I have the same belief on how to vote you do. It's not about what's in it. But where is the line where y'all decide that you should tell the public how, what your opinion is on how to vote on an amendment? I don't think the public came to you and said in a public meeting, y'all advise us, we don't understand this amendment. I think people, I think it's, it's overstepping the government's authority. I agree with the governor wholeheartedly, and I imagine most people here do. And I don't think most people here need y'all to tell us how to vote. But I don't think you should, I don't think you need to set the precedent to do this. But if you think you should, at election time, we'll know.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second, correct? Ms. Morano? Okay.
Barbara Morano, I certainly hope you do not approve this resolution for many, many reasons, as you heard before. If it's truly educational, the Women's Republican Party has come out with their statement. The Women's Democratic Party has come out with their statement. And people have had, have this conversation among themselves. That's enough education. As far as parental improvement, of course, I would want that. And I'm not quite sure if that took it out of the amendment. And also, our former President Trump, from the last thing I heard, said he was going to vote in the affirmative. And he also said he was going to vote to legalize marijuana. So that's his opinion. But what the Collierville Commissioner said is that, said he was opposed to it, but he changed. And he has a right to change. But I do not think the Walton County Commissioners need to come out on this. And as Ms. Harris said, what about the rest of the amendments? This is a personal choice.
President Trump has said he would, he would vote his-
Well, did he flip? He flipped. Okay. And that was his opinion.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Yes, young man?
Michael Miller, M-I-L-L-E-R. Commissioner, well, Madam Chair, I personally interpret this as an act of participation in the campaign against the passing of Amendment Four. Mr. Gladwell, have you cleared that with your counsel as far as whether or not this could jeopardize your position on the canvassing board? As this is something that will be on a ballot, which your board, or your position on the canvassing board-
The Board of County Commissioners is within its rights to pass a resolution taking the position on matters that are referendum issues for constitutional amendments. That's been the case for, since the 1968 constitutional amendments and Home Rule. Whether they wish to or not is the board's decision. But an individual commissioner acting in his official authority does not step out of their authority regarding the canvassing board.
So this couldn't be interpreted as an act of campaigning, one way or the other?
I do not believe this advocates for the vote of any citizen or for the donation of money for or against. I do not believe it constitutes political action.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
So we have two and two.
Motion fails due to a tie.
Okay, the motion failed. Two to two. Okay, Mr., Commissioner Gladwell, you have one more, I think.
I would like to, as you know, Mr. Robert Nelson had filled the District Two seat on the Planning Commission and has since passed away. And so the seat's open. And I would like to appoint Mr. Eli Smith, who has filled out the proper paperwork and is a resident of Walton County and is qualified. I'd like to appoint him for the remainder of the term, which expires in 2025.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I should have asked if there was anyone in the audience that wanted to speak to that? No? Okay. Motion passes. Thank you very much. And we've done your last one already, correct?
Yes.
Okay, did you have anything else?
No.
No? Okay. Yes, Mr. Sunday.
Skipped over it, removed it from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, and that is a request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the amended planning fee resolution for the short-term rentals.
Need to be clear, you're approving the fee resolution. The agenda item has a couple of additional references in there, but all that is noticed on agenda day is the fee resolution. It is not the ordinance amendments attached.
Okay.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Anyone from the audience want to speak to that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Commissioner Drake, did you have anything? No? Any public comments? Mr. Osborne, go ahead, and then I'll take the lady on the left.
Could we, would the chairman entertain a small break before we get into-
We'll take, we'll take a five to seven-minute break here. Is back in order, and we are at public comments. And I believe that Mr. Osborne was the first one.
I didn't want to interrupt you, but it said that, did you do the proactive versus reactive?
No, I canceled that. Thank you.
Okay, I have three things I want to discuss today. Uh, the Board of County Commission in 2016 voted to settle a dispute with, with me. And we settled that. Uh, and it said in the dispute that you voted on of the previous commission, it says, "If we believe the terms have been violated, prior to any suit initiated to enforce the terms or conditions of this mediation settlement, the parties shall engage in mediation within 30 days of the written request." I requested it in July in writing. In August, I found out that I needed to re-request it with my attorney on it, even though it doesn't say that. So, I did that. I was notified that we, that the fact had been informed. And nobody's contacted us. So, I'm asking the BCC today, because I've gone through the process of not coming to ask you. Have you voted not to mediate, and you would like me to pursue new litigation instead of the terms that we agreed to, that we would discuss if we believed a violation? Because we-
The board has not voted on the matter whatsoever. The matter has been referred to fact previously assigned counsel. My understanding is the communications were made to Mr. Osborne's attorney, but we'll certainly follow up on if they were not made by fact counsel. I will gladly do that personally.
We have not voted.
I would, I wish my time would've stopped while Clay was talking.
That's okay. I'll give you a-
But, but I'm just, I'm just saying, I have not, I'm the one that made the request. There's no request for, there's no requirement for counsel to be notified. I have identified new counsel at, at the county's request that I have one there. But the fact is, it doesn't give you, say, "Well, if we notify somebody," it doesn't say anything like that. Okay? It just says that I need to notify you. And if you don't, it also says, "If anybody violates the terms of the mediation settlement agreement, uh, they'll be entitled to reasonable attorney's fees." Well, how, how, how can I even media, I mean, the previous board voted we would do that. So, that's my one issue. The second issue was-
Mr. Osborne, your attorney communicated back with us on August 30th, and we are awaiting what he told us he was gonna be getting to us on that date. So, we will move forward, and I'll make sure we reach out to Mr. Chapman.
I've, I've got that. It doesn't stop you from communicating with me. There's no reason.
If you're represented by counsel, it is inappropriate for a member of the Florida Board to represent it by a represented party.
I, I was not cursy copying any emails, and I've included all you, and it doesn't say that here. Second thing I'm gonna say is this. Last, last year, I came up here, and Clay said I couldn't discuss that under litigation. But he said I had the right to use the process laid before me. It's been over a year since I filed a code complaint with Wade Wilmeth, and it has not been put into the system. Okay? I, I refiled after Clay said that, saying that Wade did not put my code complaint into the system, and I prevented sufficient evidence, including a special master's ruling. I have not been provided due process, and I'm letting you, the commission, know. And he can answer what he wants to, but this is my time. I haven't received an answer, and I've waited. And, and I wanted, and I was told that that would be put in there, and it has not. So, that, that's my second issue. And my third issue is this, what I was, Ms. Johns asked me, the chair, to come up here on. You just had a water management plan, and I wanna know, since they stayed here, were they informed of the six or seven letters you've received about what's required of the water management plan for the 2,000 acres of Sandeston? Or they, have they received all those from planning? Did they receive the Florida Board of Engineers' results saying that the county was using the wrong standard? Do they know that there's direct piping of water occurring from county property and, uh, and the findings of that by Dr. Harper? And has those engineers who's managing our watershed plan been informed of those things? And is this being managed by somebody who, who lost their license for fraud? I am, I want this addressed by the commission. And I think this is ridiculous if we proceeded forward with this water management plan, knowing that a Florida Board of Engineers, a PhD, state agencies have told us we're failing to use the wrong standard. I didn't know about those waters, workshops, or I would've gone. But did we tell these people we're paying about our watershed problem, about the known data surveys and stuff? Y'all paid like $400,000 of total money between Tetra Tech, Dr. Harper, and surveys. Have we given that numerical data that was accepted by the Florida Board of Engineers and the DCA and DEO when they told this county we were using their own standard? Are they aware of that? That's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Um, it's, there's a possibility that, that Mr. Boyle or Ms. Goodhart could speak with Mr. Osborne and, and at least address that last, the third issue that he had.
I think the folks should know, do they have the information?
I guess that would surprise me what happens. Small little sidebar. Your third, your third question.
How about they get with-
Okay. Can we just have, you, you get with Mr. Osborne and address that? What's-
My question is to the BCC, because you're the only people that can directly have the information.
Well, I do have a question, though, about your item number two, the code complaint. Is, is there an update on that?
I'd have to defer to Code or the county administrator. I know exactly what Mr. Osborne said was said in public meetings. But I don't oversee those directly.
Can we get the information and provide it to Mr. Osborne? I mean, when you-
I've given you the information. I'm expecting the complaint to be filed, to be filed. Nobody has disputed the information.
Yes. So, the last, the last communication I had with Mr. Osborne about this, we had, Code had requested some more specific information. He told me he was gonna get it. Then he said he was not. Then he said that he had turned it over to law enforcement as a criminal complaint.
I have no idea what more specific information they want. It, it's not more specific. Nobody sat down with me. I, I've gone to law enforcement for the crime of it, but it doesn't change the right to have Code enforced. Nobody's communicating with me. They're, they're not answering the documents. Nobody's asked me to sit down and explain the documents I gave to them. So, no wonder they don't know it. But somehow, they couldn't figure out the parcel number that I was talking about, yet y'all pulled permits and got grants on those parcel numbers. So, the county must know what they are. They're not on the tax rolls. But you own those ditches. So, if they don't understand, I'm available to go with Commissioner Johns, that's in her district, and Mr. Sunday, and all the planning people. And I'll drive them right there and go, "This piece of property that you own, and here's the PhD report that I paid for, and all the documents." So, if Code doesn't understand it, somebody in Code needs to be fired. Thank you.
Thank you. This lady over here has had her hand up for a while. Oh, I didn't, I didn't even realize that was you, Lee. Come on up. Hi.
I am Lee Moore, M.O.O.R.E., Executive Director of scenic Walton. First, on a personal note, just whoever was responsible for these new chairs out here, I just wanna say thank you very much. They are so comfortable.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Um, it means, little things mean a lot sometimes. So, um, thank you. And, um, second, I, I wanted to mention the, um, the pedestrian cyclist underpass project in Inlet Beach. Um, I don't know if some of you have heard, we made a difficult decision this morning to cancel the event that was scheduled, the ribbon cutting and celebratory, I think you have heard, um, celebratory event afterwards, um, due to the pending negative weather situation. Even if it doesn't end up happening here, which I don't think it will, but, uh, we just felt it best to, to reschedule at a later date. So, we will. Um, but I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank everyone that was involved with that project. I know some of you here were, um, and we appreciated the work that was done very much. Um, Mr. Drake, as at the time, a rep, state representative for our, um, our district, helped immensely with kicking off funding for that project. Um, Commissioners, multiple Commissioners have been involved in getting that prioritized, the list of the Okaloosa-Walton TPO project list that helped it get done and get done faster. Um, Commissioner Anderson was very involved in, in the whole process as well. And Commissioner Chapman, former Commissioner Bill Chapman, was very involved back at the time. We've been working on this, believe it or not, for probably, um, close to 10 years.
Woo!
And so, um, it was a long time coming. I know there's been some negative commentary from the public about the project, and especially the time it took. And look, it's here, it's done, it's, um, it's gonna, uh, we believe firmly it will save lives. So, that makes it all worth the wait, um, for certain. It was a tough wait for everybody involved, believe me. I also wanna thank FDOT, um, the Florida Department of Transportation, and a lot of people there had a lot to do with this getting done, as well as our very own tourism department, um, has been very active, both in, um, there was some TDT funding allocated to the project early on that was instrumental in helping it get moved up the priority list. That was huge. And they've also been, um, now Brian and predecessors in the past, um, but Brian Kellenberger has been a huge help in just, um, managing the project from the county side and working with all of us, um, you know, to keep things moving in the right direction. So, we're thrilled. We will get, we wanna let the storm pass, and then we'll reschedule the celebration and ribbon cutting, but hope you can all attend. And a bunch of people from the public can attend as well. And again, just thank you very much. Um, we at scenic Walton led the community side of the effort to get this done, and, um, we're just thrilled. And also, one last quick thing, I wanna thank, um, the Cultural Arts Alliance. Um, and they have come in and done a beautiful job with some public art there and the murals. And by the way, in a few months, there'll be a second phase of public art, um, that I think everyone's gonna love as well. So, that's it.
Thank you very, very much. Appreciate all your hard work.
Absolutely.
And, and it is growing pains, you know, with something like that. It just, but it's always worth it. So, thank you.
Definitely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Anyone else? Lisa.
Hi, Lisa Vega. Um, this is in relation to the parking that I didn't get to come up and speak about earlier. Um, so I just wanted to ask a question before I, the parking lot that we're talking about, was that purchased with TDC money?
Do you recall?
It was deeded to the county from, by St. Joe for, uh, $10. And, but the improvements were with-
TDC money. So, if we sold it, which I don't think we should sell it, then the TDC would need to receive something back, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, so, one, I just wanted to, I think his name was Kevin Boyle, uh, just wanted to make a statement. First of all, I wouldn't ask anyone in Seaside about anything about parking. It's the worst thing ever. Um, I know full-time residents that don't even go to Seaside Watercolor anymore due to the parking. So, I'd like to thank Seaside for being respectful of full-time residents, because they're not welcoming to any of us at all. Um, one of the things that I wanted to share with everyone, if you're not aware from a technology perspective, the QR code systems are hacked. So, there doesn't, nothing prevents me from print, printing off my own little QR code sticker and putting it right on top of that sticker. And you come and scan that and enter your credit card information, I would say thank you, because you just paid me. So, before we enter into any type of system on a QR scanning, and I know they have it in Seaside, I don't think it's the right way to do it. So, we could end up in a situation, especially if it's county property that we're gonna start having people pay, and the county thinks they're getting paid or someone else, then it, it's, it's a serious issue. So, I'd be very cautious on anything QR-related. Um, I think we should keep the parking, and I think we should have residents, full-time residents of Walton County should be able to park for free. I know a lot of cities, um, in that, not local, where you receive a sticker for your window for every year, your tag. You can't hand it off onto a tourist or someone renting your short-term rental. It has to be in your windshield. And you can park on any of, any of the county properties or city properties, whatnot. So, I think we, the full-time residents, should not have to pay to park. But I also believe that there should be a maximum, three-hour or whatever it may be, right? Um, because from an employee perspective, when Mr. Boyle was stating, "Oh, well, you know, employee parking lot, et cetera," just as an example, Delta Airlines, you're a pilot, you're a flight attendant in Atlanta or any of the other airports. You take a bus. You park in the employee lot, and they bus you, which is exactly what they're doing off of 331. There's no need for them to take that parking lot from us. Um, then, let me go back, I was scribbling notes, um, to the design review board. We definitely need to get people on that board that really care. We have a flashing neon gas sign on 38. It looks like we're on the strip of Vegas or something like that. That should've never been approved. It's extremely tall. It's not low to the ground like the one on the corner of 331 and 98. So, I don't know how that passed, but it's, it's an eyesore right there on, on- So I don't know how that passed, but it's an eyesore, right there on 30A. Boys and Girls Club. I'm not going to get into the details of it, so don't worry about that. But the Boys and Girls Club, I know a lot of the seniors that were here today are being misled. I've spoken to many of them. But, you know, they don't necessarily drill down into the details. They just know what's being told to them, that they're going to get a full community center just for them. And I really think to the comments that were made earlier, and Mr. Kellenberger came up, and I think it was Ms. Morano that was asking about the event center.
I need you to wind it up.
Okay, I'm real quick. But there was a discussion that there's a workshop, a preliminary design and then a workshop. There has been no discussion with the community showing the preliminary design on the Boys and Girls Club, and then a workshop. So I think that needs to be done before anything is purchased. Because really, at the end of the day, when you look at it, building a little building next door to the Boys and Girls Club is not a community center.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I want to make a couple of comments about the QR code that you mentioned. I've read something recently about that and that it can be a problem. So there's probably a better way for us to look at that. You try to do something good and the bad guys are going to mess it up for you. And I also wanted to mention, while I'm thinking about it, that we've realized that the October 22 meeting, that we moved the Boys and Girls Club information to that meeting, is actually going to be in Freeport because of early voting. So it'll be in Freeport, not in the South Annex on the 22nd of October. Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Curry? Suzanne, I, okay. I apologize.
Dan Curry, for the record. What I wanted to say earlier, I did want to say thank you to Commissioner McCormick, I was going to say that at the end, for doing his due diligence, looking through that report. Thank you very much. Those are the type of questions that we need to ask. In addition to that, we need to look at the physical responsibility, and that's where I was trying to get to. I wanted to see, because you don't want to be house poor and car poor, because eventually, you know, we took out a loan in 2006. And we're still paying on that 18 years later. And we're paying a lot of money every year. And Melissa says that the current loan, or however we're going to pay for the Boys and Girls Club, isn't in the budget. So where is that money coming from? And where is the money coming from that Commissioner McCormick was talking about with new roofs and all the stuff that is wrong with all this? If none of that is budgeted-
That's a really good question, and that will be coming before the board. So, I just don't know if it's appropriate for you to be discussing that. Am I correct?
In his public comment-
But I mean, as in his position.
He is, he wants to do sort of publicly notice meeting, he is a commissioner elect.
Okay, all right. I just don't want you to get in trouble.
If any of you individually outside of this, y'all both be in trouble. Except for Commissioner McCormick. In this forum, he's welcome to bring it up.
Okay, go ahead.
And that's all, I just wanted to know where the money, that's, I think those are questions that we need to know. We need to know how much it's going to cost us to get this building up to par. And we need to know where the money's coming from, that we're going to pay for this loan back. That's, I mean, in a common household, you would do that with anything that you purchase, a vehicle, a house? Do I have enough money? How long am I going to get this loan for? You need to know all that beforehand. You know, we don't do the Pelosi aspect and sign something and then figure it out later. So, thank you very much.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. Thank you very much. Ms. Harris? She's had her hand up for quite some time. I'll get you next, Tabitha.
Suzanne Harris. I want to know from all of you why Tony Anderson was here today and ready for the meeting, and why he left the parking lot. Now, since I've been sitting here in my little chair, I've had three different people text me that Laura has been at the door looking at me. Well, I don't think it's me she's looking at, Stan, and you know it. But I just figured that out. But for us to postpone a vote because a commissioner was here and then something happened and he left, and we had to postpone the discussion, and all of those senior citizens were here? I am not happy. Clay? Did you know that Tony was here and left?
I'm not saying.
Okay. Did anybody else?
I thought he was sick. I was told-
We don't, that's not-
Okay, well, I was just told he was here and left.
Do what? What, I didn't see it.
Laura said Tony wasn't here. I was just told that he was here and he left. What? Was he here, Dan?
We were talking about the fact that someone else just came to the door.
The comment was to not allow people to come in from the back and speak.
That's okay.
I don't, I did, I don't know if he's here or not, but that wasn't appropriate. We can't have talking back and forth, that's not, that's what I was saying.
That's fine. But I don't like getting texts that Laura's at the door looking at me. And I don't like to be told when the meeting's over, or when y'all take a break, that he was here earlier and left. That doesn't seem right. And I'm sorry that Stan Sunday's wife is sitting out here on the front row. I don't know what's going on. But if Tony was here and he left this meeting, that's totally uncalled for.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes.
Let me respond to that. The continuance was at my request. At the end of the day, I asked for the continuance because there were some questions that I have that needed to be answered before we vote. So this was not done. Actually, the continuation was off my motion, not, but, but that didn't happen. It was, I was going to request it be continued to, I got the answers to these questions anyway. So let's not make it out more than what it is.
And just for the record-
And for the record, I have not seen Commissioner Anderson.
For the record, I haven't either, and I was just told that he wasn't going to be here, so that he wasn't feeling well, so. Okay, Tabitha, did you want to come up?
Yes, Tabitha, Tabitha Howard, H-I-W-A-R-D, Sandeston. And yes, also with the stormwater thing, I was very curious as well, as if the Dr. Harper's report was considered with all of this. Because myself as well, the same as Alan, it was March the 9th, 2021, when we had a different commissioner before us. I think at that time, we had, what was it, Mike Barker was the chair and everything. But everyone, we set up here and we had agreed that within 90 days, that we are going to get back with the stormwater thing. And that was back in 2021. And when I just mentioned the thing of getting the note from Stan saying that I couldn't do my Sandeston thing unless I was more towards the south end, also, that item was tabled. Like, what does that mean? I got to talk for about a minute and then it was tabled. When does it come back? You know, there's still a lot of things with Sandeston that have been left unanswered for me. And I just find it very upsetting that I can't speak about anything because of possible litigation. But then, it was just a few months ago that Danny Glidewall wanted to buy some of Sandeston DRI. That was a part of the, an Indianland burial ground that has a cell tower on it. And how is that? Why, how could that be put on the agenda, be placed on the agenda? But the things that I want to talk about weren't allowed. And I live there. And I paid, I pay my taxes, I live there, I try to do the right thing. But I'm getting nowhere. And I've been trying to have things of Sandeston on the agenda for quite some time, because of the flooding and things of that nature that we do have. And the last time I had, I sent anything to Code, they sent it directly to Sandeston. And then ever since then, I've been getting threats. So, you know, it's just difficult.
That, Tabitha, has nothing to do with the county or the board? That, the private portion of that with the, whatever the threats that you're getting, that is not-
Oh, yeah, and I don't know where they're coming from, honestly.
Yeah, that, that wouldn't-
They don't have a name tag on them.
That wouldn't have anything to do with us at all.
Well, I do think that we should be able to set the standard, that y'all should require that. Because we have these different standards. Is the Harper report correct? Or is it this half-inch standard that Sandeston needs to go to, go through before more building permits are handed out? Because right now, I just heard in a burnt pine, they're wanting to build a pool. So, I mean, and we were getting all these building permits, and if we're out of regulations,
I've had a meeting with a lot of people from the planning department on this topic. And I was provided a length with a ton of information. I'm happy to send that to you.
Oh, I get lengths of different things, but none of it mentions the Harper report.
This does.
Oh, it does?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, Ms. Morano.
Thank you. I just ask for your patience. I want to talk about the Boys and Girls Club for a minute. I wanted to thank Commissioner McCormick for looking at that inspection, but also the inspection cost. If we do purchase that, what is it really going to cost to get that building straight? Also, I didn't see an appraisal. I just saw something from the property appraiser. The other quick thing is childcare is not the responsibility of the county. And you will be taking that on. Childcare is, could be the responsibility of a school district. As you know, I was a principal once. We had after-school care and we had morning care. Or it could be by freestanding Boys and Girls Club. But if we allow them to lease, they are going to lease that entire building. And that was in the report. And that's what we meant by, we think the senior citizens are a little confused, because you're committing to build another building. Now, of course, the parents want soccer, yes you are, it's right in that report. It's a separate add-on building. My other question is, I thought someone just walked into Commissioner Anderson's office from the Boys and Girls Club and presented their idea of selling it. But now I see John King's name on a, on the sales agreement. Now, John King is going to get 2%. He's going to make $190,000 out of this deal. When you thought about hiring John, it was brought up that maybe we should get a full-time county employee. And my goodness, we could. And they can make six or seven deals in this year for maybe $90,000. And I do believe we have certified realtors on our county payroll. So I, I'm, I don't think John King deserves a nickel if this deal goes through. Now, of course, he knows he wants to make $190,000. So he is not going to let this deal go through. And we have certified people, Dan, Stan has a master's degree, his department is excellent, that could be working up deals. I'm sure he was part of the negotiations. And also, under Melissa Thomason's group, excellent people. We don't need a county realtor slash developer. And I accent the word developer.
Madam Chair.
Leads a lot of questions open, yes, yes.
Mr. Sunday, the schematic or the, the building plan that I was shown has an additional building, but that was the plan of the Boys and Girls Club at the time they built. We don't have any plans to build any second building. That was all about what they proposed in their DRI, or their development order a long time ago. Isn't that the case?
Yes, sir. In short, I can address most of Ms. Morano's questions and concerns. You are correct. The floor plan that was attached to the agenda came from a realtor. I worked, I stayed at the office until about 8 o'clock last night trying to work through that. It was not accurate, so I apologize for that. We did-
Did it come from John King?
Yes.
See, this is what I'm concerned about. Stan, continue, but please forgive me. I am, he is out for John King, he is not out for the county. And so, go ahead, Stan.
Okay. So the floor plan that was attached to the, to the agenda does reflect an addition that was, when it was, when it was originally designed by the architect, they designed another building that was to, to be constructed, that did not get constructed. So it is that, if you look at that floor plan, it is misleading.
But, but isn't, but what part of that building will really go to the senior citizens? That's not delineated in that plan that you have attached to the agenda, is that correct?
So, this morning, we worked on the new version, which shows, which we'll be discussing, but it shows the space that would be exclusively used by the Boys and Girls Club and the space that would be occupied and accessed by the county. So we cleaned that up this morning, we apologize for that.
There are a lot of questions left.
Yeah, and I think we all want a copy of that, if that could be put on. We don't want to wait-
We uploaded the new one to the agenda. It's uploaded.
It's uploaded. And was there a true appraisal, or did this just come from the property appraiser?
There are two appraisals.
There are two appraisals?
Both exceed the asking price, but we have not shared those numbers with the seller.
Well, why haven't, that's public information. Why aren't those appraisals out there? I don't think they appraised for 9.5 million.
Not in public record yet, is it?
Well, why not?
At this point, it is public record, yes. It was not originally, but we're well past 30 days from the day-
So you all have the appraisals in front of you?
And we should attach it to the next, so you'll have it available for the next meeting.
Okay, and my answer again, did John King present this to the board? Or is he just coming along and signing his name?
Not to the board, but maybe to someone else.
I don't think he came to Commissioner Anderson. I think the idea of the Boys and Girls Club came from the Boys and Girls Club into Commissioner Anderson's office. And now, all of a sudden, we have John King tagging along at $190,000.
I was, I was looped in by Commissioner Anderson.
You were looped in? What do you mean, looped in? You were asked to-
Brought in, asked to-
And you're very qualified, Mr. Sunday, to do the whole thing. And your staff, I think there's somebody in real estate on your staff. We don't need John King, and it's not too late to get him out. And $190,000 could be used for, to help with even the inspections and the upkeep. But I don't even want you to buy it. That's another issue. But we have a lot of questions here.
We have a lot of questions. We absolutely do have a lot of questions. And maybe we're moving this a little bit faster than we need to.
So, okay, I'm going to look forward to the appraisals. I'm going to look forward to the new diagram. And God only knows what else we have to look forward to. Because John King will be out there advocating to make this deal, because he wants the money. Has nothing to do with the people, has nothing to do with the children, has nothing to do with the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. King?
Clay, now that it's a matter of public record, what are the two appraisals?
You'd have to ask Mr. Sunday, I'll call up top of my head.
You can get, yeah, we, it's-
Our asking list.
I can, I can give you rough numbers from memory. It was about 9.8 was the low one, and 11.2 or 11.25 was the higher of the two.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. John King, I just heard my name when I walked back in. I was outside, so I don't know all that was said. I'm sorry?
I think, no, wait, you talk to me, please, Mr. King, this-
I thought I, I thought I heard Alan say something. I'm just curious.
I didn't hear. I think the question, I think the question was, were you involved in the, in the purchase of this at the beginning?
After, after two and a half years, you guys had three proposals to have requests for qualifications. You had three people. You come up with two people, make a proposal, and I signed a contract with the county for real estate services. The Boys and Girls Club hired a broker to represent them, and he offered part of the brokerage commission to a would-be selling broker. Very standard practice. That's part of my contract with the county. Let me finish, Commissioner Johns. Barbara Morano got up here, I don't know what the beef is with me personally, but she got up here months ago and said, "You got county staff that could do it. I can assure you Stan Sunday doesn't want, can't take the time with all he's got going, but, but you could do something, and, and you could have somebody better at it, or I'm not needed, but a person that's been doing it for 46 years have completed over 2,000 real estate traction, transactions." That, that is just utter stupidity, that she would bring that out.
It is, it is a person's opinion, and they have a right to their opinion.
Yes, she does. And thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?